This one right here.
It's kind of a membership thing.
All right, good evening.
We're not on.
We're on, yeah, we're good. I heard you.
Hope you're doing well this evening, welcome, and I'll call this meeting to order.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Thomas, roll call please.
Dr. Bellamy. Ms. Hill.
Here.
Ms. Walker.
Present.
Mr. Signer.
Here.
Ms. Galvin.
Here.
Are there any announcements?
Mayor Walker, I do have one. Starting now, this month, and continuing throughout the year 2019, the city of Charlottesville, Albemarle County, and the University of Virginia will each be making new commitments for climate action. And we want to hear from you, our community, to help inform these efforts. Sustainability staff from these organizations are collaborating on community outreach. Community engagement and public input are an important part of the collaborative process, and we hope that you will engage to help advance climate action in our region. For the city specifically, we are currently accepting public comment on a new greenhouse gas reduction goal. Comments will be accepted through Sunday, March 17, and will be presented to council in April along with draft goal recommendations for a goal. The conversation is just beginning, so now is the time to jump into it. So visit Climate Action Together, all one word, the C and the A and the T are capitalized, so climateactongether.org for information on current and upcoming opportunities to get involved in these processes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, and I will, Dr. Bellamy will be joining us a little bit later, so just wanted to let you all know that. The consent agenda. Ms. Thomas.
Consent agenda. A, minutes, February 4, 2019, regular meeting. February 6, 2019, work session. February 6, 2019, closed meeting. B, appropriation. Dockless mobility funds for bicycle and pedestrian improvements, $50,575, first of two readings. C, appropriation. Capital fund transfer for completion of the standards and design manual rewrite, $66,680, first of two readings. D, resolution. Acquisition of 142 acres on Reservoir Road from Hedrow Holdings, first of one reading. E, ordinance. Lease for Albemarle Charlottesville Historical Society at 202nd Street Northeast, second of two readings. F, ordinance. Increase in limit for small purchase procurement, second of two readings.
Is there a motion? Is there anyone here that would like to speak on an item that's on the consent agenda? All right. Is there a motion?
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
And I just want to note, well, one, I would like to pull C for us to discuss, I have a couple of questions on C, and then, again, just to note that on E for the lease for the Albemarle Charlottesville Historical Society, that I disagree with the lease terms.
So, Madam Mayor, C will be pulled and put to the end of...
Put to the end of the agenda. All right.
So, Mr. Blair, we have to modify the motion, so adopt the consent agenda. Does Ms. Galvin have to modify her motion, or are you...
No, the mayor should pull C.
All right. Please vote. All right. Sorry, Carrie's 40. So next we have community matters. And I'll start with the... That's where I'm at, Mike forgetting all about you, sorry. So we have our city manager response to the community matters from our February 4 council meeting, so interim city manager, Mr. Mike Murphy. Thank you.
All right.
He was ready.
Ready. Couple of matters from our last meeting. One is the question of benches on the downtown mall. And so, the history on this is, as we recounted last time, you know, when the mall was re-bricked, 2008, 2009, there were some specifications made about where the benches could be. And you will remember, if you were here prior to that time, that before the re-bricking, benches could just be moved around, and there was a decision made that they would be in place in order to make sure that they were outside of fire lanes or vendor spaces or cafe spaces. At some point, you know, several years after that, there was some meetings convened down at Carver Recreation discussing feelings about safety on the mall, and as I described, there were some different subcommittees developed. And at the request of the city manager, Mr. Daley and his staff at Parks and Recreation pulled a number of the benches, particularly down by where the Violet Crown is today, Central Place, and a number of others. About three years ago, there were some benches of the design that are in front of City Hall today, the black rounded metal benches with no backs, that were installed only in front of City Hall in the, you know, Free Speech Plaza there. With the plan, that then they would go forward to the BAR and have the others approved, and that design would go in in many places on the downtown mall. But what happened is, in April 2016, the BAR declined approval of those benches. And I think, per the regulations, staff had 10 days to appeal that and bring it to council, and that did not happen. And so, as it stands today, the benches that were pulled out several years ago are still not on the mall. The backlist benches are only in front of City Hall. We've had some questions in recent meetings about whether we should revisit that. And I think that we have some amount of stock of the old benches, which were BAR-approved in varying conditions, and they could, at council's request, perhaps be reinstalled in the places that were determined before. I think there is just a larger matter of whether you want to contemplate benches on the mall and more of them in the appropriate places, and whether we want to seek some input from BAR about what designs would be acceptable. There is both a cultural landscape study and a tree preservation study happening right now about the mall, or in preparation for those things to happen in the spring. So those are some opportunities about some work you may coincide with, and then it's also possible that you decide to act independently of that. So, happy to take council's direction on that this evening. Second matter is that we've talked a little bit about piloting a new route for the trolley. We've had some construction on Water Street, as folks know. We think that will be over in time to pilot that route, having the trolley come directly down Main Street onto South Street and then turn left on Second, probably the first week of March. So, we will be doing that in just two weeks. Not that this is from a council meeting, I just want council to know, as we've received some, both phone call and email traffic, questioning what happened to the Vinegar Hill plaque that was on the, installed on the planter by the Code Building in between the Old Ice Park and the Omni. That was removed prior to the demolition that's currently happening in that area in Faulkner Construction's office and will be conveyed to Parks and Recreation. Maybe you all didn't receive as many inquiries from the public as I did, but I do want everyone, including the public, to be aware of that. And then, finally, you know, while I think people only brought this up as a joke, I will remind folks that last night we began our annual deer culling, and that'll be in process probably over the next two to three weeks.
I do have a question of Mr. Murphy, or maybe Mr. Blair, so about the chairs on the mall. What would be the process to ask the BAR to revisit, even looking at the chairs still? And we still have them in stock, as I understand, right, or were they returned?
We have both, the old model, the wooden slat benches that were installed during the re-bricking, some of them, and I don't know that there's enough in good condition to reinstall them since it's been many years that they've been out of service. But some. And a number of the benches that are out in front of City Hall that are the backlist benches. So, while I don't know that the BAR would endorse those today, they may or may not. I would assume that, as the others were previously approved by BAR, that in the designations that were already approved in the 2008, 2009 re-bricking of the mall, that we could put some of those benches back into place.
I would like to inquire of that possibility with the BAR. If there's benches that had been previously approved that were taken out, never put back in, I mean, if they've already approved them, then we don't need another BAR approval, correct?
That'd be my opinion, yeah, and confirm that with Jeff Warner and Mr. Blair.
That would be correct if the certificate of appropriateness is still applicable. Now, I think one of the things would be to look at the actual certificate to see the exact composition of those benches, to make sure that they are the same benches that Mr. Murphy is referring to.
So I guess, that would be my request, that another follow-up on that detail to see, it could be a simpler solution than we, you know, ever dreamed of, and that we can actually put the benches back. And then I guess the other thing is with the cultural landscape plan, I would like to make sure that that does include looking at benches, because that could also be another easy way to begin resolving this problem. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
So, now we're going to start with our community matters. The first speaker is Aileen Bartel.
Good evening. My name is Aileen Bartels, and I live in Belmont. I would like to bring three pedestrian-related issues to your attention. Last Saturday, I attempted to walk from West Main Street to some businesses on Water Street. The sidewalk on the north side of Water Street is closed because of the ice rink demolition, so I walked on the other side until I got to Second Street and found myself trapped behind a construction fence. At this point, there is no way for pedestrians to cross back over the street. There's a line of barriers and a ditch, but if you retrace your steps to the point where there's no barrier, the sidewalk on the opposite side is closed. In the end, I had to climb over the barrier, walk across the ditch, and duck under a rope in order to get across the street. It's currently impossible to walk from West Main to any destination on Water Street except to detour down the downtown mall. When you fail to regard the needs of pedestrians, you are saying that our time is less valuable than that of drivers. Just because a person is on foot doesn't mean that what they are doing isn't important, or that they have time to waste. Furthermore, pedestrians are often burdened with the things that they are carrying and exposed to the elements. Pedestrian access to all sidewalks on all streets should be your top priority in any construction or road engineering project. It is not acceptable to close a sidewalk for construction. If the sidewalk is inaccessible, a safe alternative must be created, which does not mean forcing us to cross busy streets. When you fail to make the needs of pedestrians and cyclists a priority, you are enabling the toxic car culture that dominates this area. Secondly, I am asking that you consider permanent closure of the Fourth Street Downtown Mall crossing. I have observed that not all drivers, particularly drivers from out of town, realize that it is a pedestrian space. People should not have to yield to cars attempting to cross. Cars should not be allowed in this space at all. Considering August 12, it is offensive every time a car drives across the mall. Third, ever since the pavilion opened, which I know is many years ago, the owners have been allowed to close the public sidewalk that leads from the Belmont Bridge to the mall, forcing pedestrians to take a lengthy detour to Market Street. A public sidewalk cannot be closed for private profit. Perhaps at the time that the pavilion was built, it was believed that people would passively accept being forced off the sidewalk, but the era of passive residence is over. It is feasible to divide the sidewalk so that ticket holders can get to concerts and pedestrians can access the mall without walking out of their way. Once again, when you allow pedestrians to be shown to decide, you are saying that our time is not valuable, that we are lesser citizens. Once pavilion repairs are completed, please allow accommodation for pedestrians during concerts. Unless the city's commitment to climate protection program is as fatuous as its self-designation as the capital of the resistance, you should be making things easier for pedestrians, not harder. All I really want is to walk places without it being a constant battle. I don't think that's too much to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Sherman.
City council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Susan Sherman. I've lived in the Willoughby neighborhood at Fifth Street and Harris Road for the past 15 years. Earlier this month, council approved the Fifth Ridge McIntyre Corridor Study. Several neighbors from the Willoughby neighborhood and I attended the January 8 Planning Commission meeting to express our concern that the Fifth Ridge McIntyre Study included inaccuracies in its accident data, in that it underrepresented and underreported accident at the intersection of Fifth and Harris, where I live. Excuse me. At the Planning Commission meeting, I indicated that the report failed to capture the death of an Albemarle County teacher who was killed at our intersection in 2016, nor did it capture at least three additional accidents that had occurred since then. One of those additional accidents likely would have taken the life of my neighbor, were it not for her car's airbags deploying. At the conclusion of the Planning Commission meeting, where my neighbors and I spoke, Chairwoman Green told city staff that they should, quote, "make these neighbors happy." I felt it was a flippant response to a serious situation. We are not showing up at planning meetings and council meeting as whiny citizens. We're showing up because we, with teenage drivers in our families, hold our breath every time our kids drive out of our neighborhood toward the intersection. Tonight, I regret to inform you that even since the January 8 Planning Commission meeting, there have been at least three additional accidents at that intersection. One including a southbound driver on Fifth Street who jumped the median, took out a small tree, crossed the northbound lanes, and ended up on the sidewalk. Fortunately, no pedestrians were struck. I implore you to dedicate resources to undertake a robust traffic study at this deadly intersection. Traffic lane striping, as the city engineer has proposed, will not be enough to address the severity of the situation. We have been told by city staff that we can't control people's bad behavior, like running red lights or driving under the influence. While this is true, we do have control over understanding why those bad behaviors result in an inordinate amount of accidents at this particular location. Not every issue that council takes up is a matter of life and death, but this one quite literally is. Thank you.
Joy Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor. Hey, Mr. Murphy. Good evening, everybody. My name is Joy Johnson, and I reside at 802A, Hardy Drive. And I'm here tonight to ask that you all support what the Planning Commission has done in proving the critical slope. We would like to thank the Planning Commission for the unanimous vote last week to approve the critical slopes waiver at the South First Street development. Everything that you all have asked us to do, we have went back and have done. It may not, Ms. Oliver will read the rest of this, so I'm not going to read it just to give her an opportunity to do so. So it is very, very important to us that this moves forward. I understand the concerns that you all have. This is our first try at it. As far as Crescent Halls, you all support us going ahead and rehabbing. It's doing the ball field. And there is a momentum right now, both with the South First Street residents. They're giving us some good feedback of what they don't like, what they would like, because it's going to affect them. We're also thinking about what is happening on the other side of, I think it's Hartman's Road, I might not get that right. And so, we've put in a lot of work. Even some of the funders who we're sitting with is liking the collaborative thing that they're seeing going on, right? They call it, I forgot the word that the gentleman used. And to me, that was like, oh, we're doing something right. So I'm asking, I'm pleading to you all to be able to approve, the Planning Commission did it, it's up to you all whether or not you all want to approve their critical, but it's very, very important. Slowing down the momentum right now is slowing down the actuality that something is going to happen. And we have done a lot of work at South First Street. We've been talking to the residents. And what I want to say real quickly, Ms. Galvin, is that in the meeting that I was with, with you and Mr. Murphy and Cornelius Griggs from Chicago, when he looked at our site plan, what he basically said is, "It could be better. It's not perfect, but it could be better." You offered to tweak it, and we said yes. I don't know if you sent it back to the Housing Authority, but we didn't see the tweak, right? So, for us to be hearing that, you know, folks on council, it's been an issue, we have really met with you and tried to figure out what is it that we need to do to satisfy, right? This really needs to happen, the tax, you know, tax credit is going in. There are funders that are lined up to say, yes, we will help to fund this, and we can't slow that momentum down. I'm really speaking from my heart and not reading what is on paper. I just want you all, if you say you want resident input, resident-driven, even things that the mayor has suggested to us, we have done. I don't know what else you want us to do, but, and you know, we're asking, Milton or Mike, if there is something else that we need to do, then, you know, just, I'm just asking and pleading with you all to approve that critical slope, so that tax credit can go in, so Crescent Halls, and we can start doing something there.
All right.
Thank you.
Are there comments?
And I'm sure there'll be more discussion for this. I think part of my confusion was during our last council meeting, when we were talking about the funding for the CRHA components and how funds would be reallocated and some funding was going to be added. The council discussion, I took away from that was that we were going to be allocating funds for them to look at all of South First Street comprehensively, and I think, I guess, the definition that I thought we were engaged in included all the acreage. And then follow-up conversations when this critical slopes came up on our agenda made me realize that maybe even the folks in CRHA who were in the audience that I thought were nodding their heads in agreement, might have been thinking of just a portion of that. And so I was just curious of my colleagues' perceptions of that conversation.
No, and that was what I thought was happening, too. So when I thought the, today, was when we spoke earlier, I spoke with Councilor Hill, and I thought that the pulling the critical slopes waiver was, that everyone was in agreement with that, and didn't learn until that conversation, that that wasn't the process that was happening. I called Ms. Johnson, tried to touch base with her after our phone conversation, and spoke with Dave Norris, was able to talk to him, so have a, now, a little bit better understanding, but no one called me after it was pulled to alert me to the fact that this was something that could be a potential issue. So it was just this afternoon that I learned that what I, and I thought that that was the agreement, too, that with the funding, that we were going to take a look at the whole site again. And that's something that I have been talking about in every conversation that we've had.
And were you in touch with the people that you suggested to us who worked with us?
Yes.
And I would just like to agree with Mayor Walker and Vice Mayor Hill, that I, my understanding, when we met last time, and waived the close to a couple hundred thousand dollars in former debt, that when we issued and freed up the almost a million dollars, that there was certainly an ample portion for the Housing Authority to do a master plan of the entire 12-acre site of South First Street. And that was my understanding, that it was a master plan for that entire 12-acre site. And so, yeah, that's where some confusion has happened, because then we saw that on our, and as you know, I've asked to have a meeting with many of you, so I hope we can still meet and talk about this. But that was my understanding last meeting as well, Mayor Walker and Vice Mayor Hill.
And I didn't know anything about the tweaks that you all were expecting.
I have not tweaked anything.
Yeah, you just, you suggested it, and so...
I verbalized my concerns to...
And we said, okay, because we were willing to work, to see, you know, to listen to you and to tweak, what needs to be tweaked. But, you know...
Well, we'll have, I hope we can still meet, because...
We will be meeting.
And so that, Councilor Galvin and I, we were meeting last week, and I said, instead of the two of us, because a lot of this, you know, I need to be in a room with a lot of people talking about this to really understand the entire picture. So I said, instead of the two of us just chatting about it, propose that she request a meeting, and I don't know if Councilor Bellamy or I will be there, you know, that'll be really up to him whether he wants, whether he'll be at the meeting or I'll be there, but I just thought that it should be more of us having that conversation, and she agreed, so...
Thank you.
Want to clarify with council and...
Want to clarify with council and members of the public that, you know, in the meantime, until it is clarified from the Housing Authority as the applicant to the city, my instruction to staff is that they continue the approval process, right? And certainly, tonight, coming off the agenda, it's difficult to keep the 314 LITC submission date, low-income housing tax credit. And it may be that that application won't go in. But in the meantime, until I hear that from the applicant, my instruction to staff is that this may return to council for critical slopes on March 4th. I've instructed Ms. Creasy to pull the Planning Commission. They were supposed to have a special meeting next Tuesday on the 26th for consideration of the subdivision plat. And that doesn't need to come to council after the fact, but it can't come until after council considers the critical slopes waiver, which means after 3/4 but before 3/14. And then after that, you would need to have considered at the staff level administratively, because this is a by-right product or a by-right project, the site plan approval. And so it's an extraordinarily tight timeframe if the Housing Authority were to go forward with the LITC application. But until I hear differently from the applicant, staff is prepared to continue to execute all of the timelines, although it has evolved a bit since we're not talking critical slopes tonight.
All right, Star Peterson.
I'd like to address what our first speaker said. I absolutely agree that pedestrian safety and sidewalk accessibility are important. That said, I wish that people got as upset about racial profiling of black and brown people as they do about temporary sidewalk obstructions. I found it very interesting to hear a white woman up here talking about being treated like a lesser citizen. Maybe listen to our neighbors of color, who are people of color, or our neighbors who are living in public housing with mold and with snakes about how they feel like lesser citizens. Personally, I don't want anyone using the car attack to promote their own agenda because while you're trying to navigate the sidewalks, people aren't actually speeding up and aiming for you. If you have the physical ability to climb over a barrier, that sounds awesome. That said, we do need sidewalk accessibility for our neighbors who use wheelchairs and use other assistive devices, who aren't able to physically climb over barriers. And so we do need to make sure that's addressed, even including in situations that are temporary. And I know that's difficult, but it's also absolutely necessary for many of our neighbors to fully access. One other thing I'd like to say as someone who's used assistive devices is that the city of Charlottesville doesn't enforce the rules about bushes being cut on the sidewalks. It's really hard to get down some sidewalks because thorn bushes will literally be growing to the point that the sidewalk is not wide enough for someone in a wheelchair to go down them without being poked by thorn bushes. So, thank you.
Thank you. Terry Kent.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak tonight. I'm speaking as a single mom of two teenage boys, as a former middle school educator here, and also as the founder of Better World Betty, an eco-friendly resource for Charlottesville. And currently, I'm the Director of Programs and Communications for Charlottesville Climate Collaborative, RC3, and we are a member of SEVA 100. So I've worked directly with over 150 businesses and schools and congregations and households on how they can reduce their climate impacts. And my passion and dedication for this work is really rooted in a deep love of our natural world, but for—not only for my kids, but for our entire community. And I—my personal approach has always been to have fun and be positive and very community-focused when it comes to this work. I don't think it's a political agenda. I think this is a human agenda. And in my roles doing this work, I've seen and heard firsthand how people really—people and businesses really want us to lead as a community on climate. People have a hunger for this leadership, and they have a hunger for solutions. And I'm blessed that I get to do this in my day job is provide solutions, which is why I'm excited tonight to really thank you, number one, for city and county and UEA collaborating on this issue. And also, which are why I'd like to propose a bold leadership goal of 45% reduction greenhouse gas emissions by 2030 and a carbon neutrality goal of 20—by 2050, and more regular reporting so that we can really track our progress on this. And the reason being is that we really value this as a community. Climate leadership is vital to our health and vitality. A recent NRDC report said in the climate impacts in Virginia, we can expect increased risk of asthma, increased health, heat-related illness. I can speak personally to that because for two years, I suffered from chronic Lyme and was out of work for about nine months. We also—Better World Betty lost—one of our volunteers lost her parents, unfortunately, to the flash flood that occurred last spring. So we're seeing the impacts here locally. When we know low-income families and those young—and the youngest among us and the oldest among us feel those disproportionately effects, so energy equity is key to this whole piece. So in summary, I really advocate for bold and swift action, and I really look forward to working with each and every one of you on this issue and continuing to move forward as one community on climate issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Audrey Oliver.
Good evening, Mayor Walker, councilors, and city manager. I'm Audrey Oliver. I'm a public housing resident, reside at 930 South First Street. And I'm here to talk about redevelopment for public housing units and what is needed of you councilors and what—and where we are with the redevelopment. I want to first thank the Planning Commission for the unanimous vote last week for the approval of the crucial slopes at the South First Street development sites. City council has to approve the waiver for the project to move forward. And I understand that the items have—that item have been moved from tonight's agenda to your March 4th agenda. We are grateful for the corporation and the cooperation and the support of the city staff, planning commissions, and others in reviewing and approving this South First Street development plan to date. We will be able to submit a competitive low-income housing tax credit application to the state by March 14th deadline. One of the final steps will be for the council to approve the man of crucial slopes waiver that will be coming before you on March 4th. This means that we are inches away from beginning redevelopment, not just at South First Street, but it sets the stage for just the eventual redevelopment of all public housing sites. It's about time we get started. The tax credit will bring in millions of dollars in funding. If we are not able to submit this application by the deadline, we will have to find those dollars locally. We have invested a huge amount of time and energy in getting to where we are now. We have—we are tired of living in substantial housing and unsafe neighborhoods. None of you have to live in the conditions that we do. This can't wait. We have never been close to getting redevelopment done. The time to act is now. Please don't cause any unnecessary delay in our progress. We have visited and revisited the site plans for the fill at South First Street for a year. Our informed decision came about through a collective effort with the redevelopment committee, CRHA, developer partners, and public housing residents. At your last council meeting, the Housing Authority agreed to your request to develop a master plan for the whole site, and we have already began that talk. You all have proposed that an MOU be created between the city and the Housing Authority to provide a framework for further cooperation between the two parties. We think that suggestion makes a lot of sense, and we are beginning those conversations. The Housing Authority and FAR and our development partners are doing exactly what you have asked us to do after many years of difficult work and difficult discussions. We continue to work with residents to respect our direction in this process and plans and have shift to respect our guidance. We have struck a great balance between density and quality of life, protecting the environment, and doing the most financially responsible things that can be done as we meet the needs of residents in the city of Charlottesville. We ask that you not delay this project. It's urgent. We cannot lose momentum. Housing justice in Charlottesville is long overdue. Please follow the Planning Commission anonymous recommendation and approve the critical slopes waiver at your next meeting.
Thank you. Joan Fenton.
Good morning, evening, sorry. My name is Joan Fenton. I'm chair of the Downtown Business Association. I want to respond to a couple things before I talk about what I wanted to speak about tonight. The pedestrian walkways are really significant, and the way that Water Street walkway has been handled is really not great. I think there could be some better attention to how that crossover works. But I also want to point out that we've been asking for at least a year that somebody get in touch with Google Maps, that no matter what you do, people are turning the wrong way on Second Street, the wrong way on Fourth Street. If you try to use maps to go downtown, it leads you in all wrong directions. And I realize this is a major task to try to do that, but a lot of the car pedestrian problems are because people are being told to drive where they shouldn't drive. And I think that's really a major issue to be addressed. I know the downtown businesses would oppose the closing of Fourth Street. I know that issue's come up before in conversation. I know Susan Bro opposes it as well. And if there is a discussion, obviously, we'd want to be on the table on that. On the issue of benches, some of you were not around, but prior to the removal of benches at Central Place, there were people out there with knives. They were threatening the vendors. They were threatening the musicians that were out there playing music. And that was not a safe place when we had a huge accumulation of benches there. And during all those discussions, we discussed the fact that were benches to be put back, that the businesses and the business community should be involved in that discussion and that you not arbitrarily put benches back, that we've experienced. We've been there for 20, 30 years and seen that. I did come to talk about the proposals to increase taxes. And I think the downtown businesses community and a lot of other people in the community feel that the city has been short-sighted and not receptive to those businesses that would have increased the tax base and saved us from having to discuss increasing taxes. And that if West Second had gone ahead, and if the Dewberry Hotel had gone ahead, and the projects in your business district where you're supposed to be having business and development, the taxes we would have gotten on there would have been three, four, five million dollars, and we wouldn't be discussing increasing taxes. It's become a very negative environment. People want to move into the county to do whatever they want to be doing. And I think the city really needs to look at what it's doing with their economic development because you need that funding to pay for all these wonderful projects that everybody wants to have happen. So there has to be some way that we all work together. Thank you.
Brandon Collins.
Good evening. I'm Brandon Collins. I live in Charlottesville. I've lived here my entire life. I have children who've lived here their entire lives. I'm actually here to represent FAR, Public Housing Association of Residents. FAR is the federally and locally recognized resident council and resident advisory board for residents of public housing in Charlottesville, which means Housing Authority and HUD in particular recognize that we are giving voice to the people who live in public housing and that what we have to say is valid. And we hope that you all see it that way as well. I'm here to talk about the critical slopes waiver. And I—I'm a little confused about what may have happened two weeks ago. I was here—I talked to you all about enthusiasm for the process and asked you all to smile and lighten up and embrace this historic process that's going to potentially transform communities here in Charlottesville. You know, there has been a lot of backwards-looking and a lot of second-guessing and a lot of questioning ourselves over and over and over again for the past year. And this is a collective effort with FAR, with residents, with developer partners, with CRHA, and sometimes with you all. And you have brought concerns forward, very real concerns about a site plan for South First Street. And we've always brought those back and hashed those out and made really, really hard decisions. But those are informed decisions that were taken seriously. And Housing Authority and FAR and the rest of us working on this effort, phase one of redevelopment, potentially transforming public housing in Charlottesville, we have a plan that has been submitted. The city has been very helpful in reviewing that plan. They are working super hard. I know it's really hard on their staff. They worked through the holidays, time and a half. You know, we had developer partners on our end working all the time to make sure we could get this done. And it's—it's a decision that we keep coming back to, and we do keep questioning, but we keep coming up with this answer, and we've made tweaks. And this is the decision that the redevelopment committee of the Housing Authority wants to move forward with. That redevelopment committee includes residents in direct decision-making places, and that should be respected. I'm concerned that the conversation was not understood. I think it's kind of odd to think that within two weeks' time, this massive decision to pull back from this massive effort that includes your city staff and includes all your other folks working on this would somehow be set aside in favor of this master plan. And I think it would have been very crass to hold the money over the heads of CRHA and residents because you don't like the design of what's going on in phase one of redevelopment in the ball field there. I think it's equally as crass to use the critical slopes waiver as a political wedge because you don't like the design of what's going on in the ball field there. So I ask that you approve that waiver March 4th and look at it on its merits. It's environmentally smart. It's good for the Housing Authority. Residents support it. And I really hope you can support resident-directed redevelopment of public housing. Thank you.
Jules.
How you doing?
How you doing?
My name is Jules DeRouge, and I'm here representing the People's Coalition. This evening, we want to highlight a disproportionate minority contact in the present system of justice. I'm just a little nervous, that's all. While we—we respect the leadership of women like Mayor Walker, Councilor Galvin, Councilor Hill, and shout out Ms. Thomas. We take issue with this present system of policing injustice. We go back to the origins of the system of policing in the South. It was designed to reinforce racialized debt peonage and enforce state sanctioned segregation through Jim Crow laws. While many of these laws are off the books, the persistence of disproportionate minority contact in terms of stops, arrests, and incarceration rates indicates to me and many others that many of these practices are still in ostensible effect. Yeah, of course, this deeply systemic problem is neither new nor a single person's fault. We want to recognize there's been demonstrated progress with the existence of the civilian review board and Chief Rakne's regular attendance at meetings. However, with the governor's pass being recently uncovered and the events in August 2017, we need a renewed and stronger commitment to overall data transparency and a diverse local civilian civilian review board. Specifically, we need a board with the ability to review civilian complaints and internal police investigations and act on them when proper steps are not being taken. And I would encourage all of y'all to look towards the Virginia Beach Investigative Review Board for an example of this kind of partnership. Shout out 757. In addition to asking for the council's commitment to a strong CRB, I want to take this opportunity to remind the council that I don't stand here as an individual, but as a representative for many Charlottesville community organizations and individuals committed to justice in the criminal legal system. And I ask that if you please observe and analyze the comments made by Denise Lunsford and the Southern State Police Benevolent Association regarding Katrina Turner. Katrina has a whole community standing behind her, and we stand with her, but I will say that these disrespectful comments only further demonstrate how much work our community must do in a way of healing and deep self-reflection.
Thank you. Katrina Turner.
Last city council I spoke, I spoke about three different things, and when I spoke about my son's stop, words got jumbled. If I would have put the words in different places, you know, what happened to me last week wouldn't have happened to me. But this was one of my complaints last week, and I mean, last city council, and I can't believe that nothing was said by you, Mr. Murphy, because I spoke about this last city council. And then after I spoke about this, Ms. Lunsford came at me without proof, without any investigation. She just came at me, and I've heard nothing from nobody. I don't, I don't, how, how much more are we going to have to put up with Denise Lunsford coming at us like this? Like I said, I know I made a mistake in the way I said it, but she's a former Commonwealth attorney. She's an attorney, and for her to come at me the way she did, can I ask you, Mr. Blair, what could have happened to me if Mr. Platania did not, did not see, I mean, did not see it my way? What, what could have happened to me when I know I did nothing wrong?
Well, I mean, to answer your question hypothetically, if you're talking about Ms. Lunsford's letter and had there been a prosecution, it would have been, she was asking that you be prosecuted under the Conflict of Interest Act in Virginia, and in that act, it would be, it can be potentially a class one misdemeanor for violation of that act. So that, when you ask about the letter and the allegation that was lodged within the letter, that would have been the process had Mr. Platania agreed with her analysis. Now, as we know, he did not and stated that there would not be a prosecution because he did not believe there was a violation.
I mean, so she literally said I threatened, did this in a threatening manner. She, is this slander? Is this defamation? You know, I mean, is there anything she came to you all when she wrote this letter and she, you know, however you CC'd you, but nothing to me? You know? I mean, is anything going to be done about this with her coming at me like this? I mean, I know I'm just a citizen, but what, what can be done about her trying to bring me down like this is what I want to know? Because she has some kind of indebted going on.
So I think from, and we had a conversation over, you know, about this, this past few days, and I'll say even for myself before, I hadn't, I don't know what Joe Platania reviewed. We did not review that. Denise Lunsford did not review that with us. Until he wrote his comments in the letter, I thought that things were, and this is what I share with you, to go back and look at, you know, the videotape, I thought that things were different than he even assessed in, in his email. So that's just, I think that's where the confusion came from, and that's what I share with you. I sat in a CRB meeting and talked to Denise Lunsford with you all, watching that what she had been hired to do and what she would do if she was given the opportunity. There is nothing that we can do on our end, and I think I brought up the last time that we discussed CRB, the New Jersey, you know, model where they tried to create a very robust CRB, but the equivalent of what Denise has been hired to, the equivalent of the board that she's been hired to represent, they were able to shut down that entire, entire process. So I'm hoping that we are able to get the bylaws written with the council that can approve those bylaws and get a board, a board appointed, because I think it's very important. And we've seen it in other localities where it hasn't been able to, to function well, but I think if we don't work together and get these bylaws written, that's going to be her winning without even necessarily even doing, doing anything. So I said this to her at one of the meetings on Water Street about what her intentions were, and I think we just have to work really hard to make sure that doesn't happen.
All right, David Redding.
Good evening, councilors. I'm David Redding. I live at 480 Rio Road East. I happen to live in the county, but my neighbors across the street, Mr. Murphy, live in the city, and I was wondering why all the deer came onto my property today and were looking back into the city, but since now hunting season is open, I mean, it's, I guess they're just smarter than we are. I'm here to talk about climate change, and I appreciate what you guys are doing and working together with the county and UVA. I think it's a wonderful thing. I want to tell you some positive things that are going on. I'm a volunteer with Virginia Organizing, and we have got four organizations that are sponsored by Virginia Organizing that are doing things right now about climate change. Community Bikes is, in the summertime, we give out up to 40 bicycles a week. We give away half of those bicycles. We charge a minimum rate for other bicycles. As a matter of fact, our pricing has gotten so low that we're finding bicycles with our tags on in a number of the pawn shops. Go figure. So we, we've got, we get a lot of bicycles on the road. Now, there's other organizations that are doing a good job. You look at UACC, which is the Urban Agricultural Collective of Charlottesville. That is under the auspices of Virginia Organizing also, and the idea there is to train people how to grow organic food, and they train children and that type of thing, and they do a pretty good job of all that. I volunteer also with an organization called Open Source Computer Recycling, and we recycle computers every Saturday night, and we get together every Friday, or every Wednesday during the day, and a number of us will fix and repair computers that we get in, and we'll give them away every Saturday night. And typically, we get a little old lady who says, you know, she comes and sees us, and she says, you know, when my grandson Billy was two years old, they sent me down to CVS and I had to pay to get pictures of my own grandson. Now that Johnny's two years old, they say, oh, Grandma, they're on Facebook. Grandma doesn't know about Facebook. We teach her a little bit about Facebook, give her an email address, give her a desktop computer, send her home. We put Linux operating system on it because Linux is hard to hack. So, you know, it's, we're much more efficient that way. We also work with Food Not Bombs. Food Not Bombs, every Sunday at 1:00 PM has a free meal that we give away, and that we get donations. We glean the farmer's market. We glean Kroger's, Whole Foods, Trader Joe's, other organizations, and we give away between 300 and 400 pounds of food some weeks, and give also, also, we wind up where we have a meal for 50 to 70 people. So my time's up, but we're doing lots of good stuff out there, folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Castiglione. Roy Van Dorn. And so we have a few spaces left. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
Good evening, and how are you all? My name is Alice Washington. I live at Crescent Hall. We are, asked you guys for $50 million to help, and I wanted to know why has it taken so long for anyone to kind of approve that when we have a hotel down on the, that you all are giving tax, tax credits to, that nothing is being done? And if you would Google that name, you would also see he's got places in Georgia, South Carolina, North Carolina, that's doing just what he's doing here. And I googled that about five years ago, and he's still not doing that. But we live here in substandard housing, and we got a problem with asking you for money? That building fall, or something fall off it, and somebody get hurt, you will pay millions of dollars in a lawsuit, but you can't pay to help the poor and the elderly and the disabled to have a decent place to live? This is the third time we've been here when they asked, and I know it's been over a year since I came and they asked for that money, and we keep getting a runaround. Why? I just want to know why.
Ms. Washington, so the money has been approved for Crescent Hall's redevelopment without any questions. So the questions that were coming up tonight were about the South First Street, phase one of that, and that still is a commitment. I haven't heard anything differently about the commitment and funding. It's just been some questioning about the site.
Why is it such a runaround for local stuff that we need, but an outsider can come in? Boom, it's done.
Yes. Well, I've been trying not to give the runaround, so.
Well, we know, we know this situation. We have lived here all our life, so we know how it works. I mean, a hotel, two, three hotels have been built.
I understand.
Since all this has been going on.
Yeah.
And it's always a runaround for the elderly and the poor and the disabled. It's always. And I mean, it's not just this council, it's been all councilors.
So I hope that from, you know, just the statement that I just made, that Crescent Hall's, the plans to rehab that building have been looked at and that have, everyone, I think, is in agreement with.
If not, I'll be back.
Well, we are. So I hope there's no if not, because we know. And what's the date on?
So I just want to fine tune what the mayor said.
Okay, thank you.
There, there is a capital improvement program budget that is part of the council's annual approval of the budget. It's a five-year plan, and this year's proposed budget from the manager's office has a total of $15 million proposed for the Housing Authority, $3 million in each of those five years. And that, in my understanding, exceeds the amount that's needed in local match in combination with philanthropy from Mr. Capshaw, Mr. Matthews, et cetera, in order to accomplish the wholesale renovation of Crescent Hall's. It needs to be approved by the council on April 8th, and the Housing Authority is still applying for what they call LIHTC, Low Income Housing Tax Credits, which will bring us a lot of money from the state in order to administer the renovation. I think there's a good plan. Council definitely has expressed their support for that plan, and you know as a resident, it's organized in three different towers, and so one tower at a time would be renovated per the plan from Riverbend. And you're nodding, so that means that FAR's doing, FAR's doing a good job with their engagement of the residents.
People have been hearing this for 20 years and nothing has been done, so yeah.
Yeah, and I understand that frustration.
Until I see somebody turn something down and fixing something, I will doubt it.
I can understand your perspective on that.
I'll try to construct through his own site.
And I would say, this is the first time that the Housing Authority and the city have been in the alignment and in the readiness that we are today.
Okay, so you say April the 8th?
April the 8th is the budget approval from the city. March 14th is the date that the Housing Authority should submit to the state for the low income housing tax credit money, and all of that money, in theory, should it be approved, would be available July 1.
Okay, I'm going to write all these dates down. Thank you.
It's on video, it's not.
But there hasn't been.
Can you say the dates again?
Zayanna would like for you to say the dates again.
Yeah, I think since, can you say it again?
Yep. So the application to the state is March 14th. That'll be done, the partnership of the Housing Authority and residents and Riverbend Development Corporation. April 8th is the day on which we're expecting right now for council to do the final approval of both the operational budget and the capital improvement program budget, and all of those monies, should they be approved, would be available on July 1 of this year.
Okay, thank you.
And in terms of just Crescent Hall's and the plan that was presented to us for the rehab, there haven't, we, there was no going, we didn't send that back for any revisions or anything in terms of that particular part of the project. So that was my, you know, statement without all the, all the dates.
And Mayor Walker, I have a question of Mr. Murphy. And this just reminded me, because Mr. Murphy and I were supposed to talk about this, I wanted to make sure that we were getting the sequencing right for the commitments that the Housing Authority, PHA, need when they submit their LIHTC application, given that they are submitting before we approve a budget. So we have not technically given the money to them until we pass the budget, so what do we need to do to provide assurances to VHDA that when they see their LIHTC applications, we have committed these dollars?
Yeah. So, yeah, there's many layers. I understand a successful LIHTC application is typically over 400 pages long, right? And so there are many different forms and ways in which the city is involved in that process. One of the ways is just the acknowledgement as the locality's CEO about the approval letter, right? And the second is kind of this commitment of funds. It's a separate form, and the issue that you're identifying is one of the, both the Housing Authority and Friendship Court will need that signed by the city manager prior to March 14th. My point to them has been, it's not really a budget until April the 8th. They have received guidance from the state that it would be appropriate for us to modify our language to say up to whatever the amount is that's in the draft budget. And I'm certainly comfortable with that language as far as what is the city's commitment, and I've discussed it at length with Mr. Blair. I do feel like it's a vulnerability for the applicants, and I don't feel quite as much that way for the Housing Authority program. And I don't feel quite as much that way for the Housing Authority project because we have the ability to put that on the bonded side. But because Friendship Court is a cash-funded project, and I don't know between my proposed budget on March fourth and the council's final decisions on April eighth, what the decisions will be about priorities and about what revenues you will accept and which you won't, and what things need to be added and detracted. It, it's a little bit harder for me to sign that letter, um, committing what's in the current plan for Friendship Court, which is five point nine million dollars all in the first year. Now, that said, uh, I think we can resolve this with the "up to" language. Uh, it's really just, um, you know, do I feel like, do I feel great about that ethically? Is it a promise? Um, as long as we understand ahead of time what the process is now during these next six weeks.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Yeah, you're next.
Good evening. Thanking, thank you for letting me speak this evening. This is my first time here, so I hope I'm following the right protocol.
You're fine.
My name is Sandra Murray, and, uh, I live in the Willoughby subdivision. I've lived there over thirty years. And I have a couple of notes, so I may need to refer to them. But, um, we've had representation here, uh, for council meetings before about the situation with the Fifth Street traffic and transportation issues. I come today as a, um, member of our homeowners association, but also as a victim of a very severe traffic accident that I was very lucky to have walked away from on November seventeenth. Um, given the fact that I've lived in Willoughby for so long, seen a lot of change in that area, I was so excited for Wegmans because I come from New York, and that was our grocery store in Rochester, New York. But I have to say that, um, while I understand that there are issues with people disobeying traffic laws, um, people have, in fact, in my own accident, seventeen-year-old boy ran a red light, T-boned me on the passenger side, and the car coming out on the other side from Willoughby hit me. So I was sandwiched in my car. There's nothing we can do about what people choose to do when they're driving. However, I have seen so many instances of people being so frustrated with the backup of traffic in that area, starting at Main Street from the Sacagawea area all the way trying to get through to Fifth Street Station. They are frustrated, they're pulling in front of you, they are pushing one another away, especially in that traffic area that comes over Main Street. And you can either go past to ACAC or you can go straight. Terrible place. People will push right in front of you, and it continues on down through that light. Now, I understand there's been some talk about, um, the Fifth and Ridge McIntyre Plan, and we've had people here talking about that. But I would really like to ask the council to look again at what's going on in that area. I am continuing to deal with the concussion. It's been very difficult. And it's even more difficult to see that there have been two more crashes that have occurred since that plan was adopted or was, you know, discussed. There was a teacher that was killed in that intersection, and I happened to be in the throng of people trying to get across in that situation as well. So I'm speaking from experience. I think we need to take a look at how the traffic lights are set because all the way back from Main Street, coming up, it's not set well enough so that people can stop appropriately, have a turn signal appropriately, either from Willoughby coming out. You're trying to come out of Willoughby, and there's only one space to come straight out. You can either go to the right, or you can go straight. There's no way to go left. And that's where everyone is coming from. Oh, gosh, past the school, uh, past Floyd Lyons area to head to Fifth Street Station, coming that way. So I know time is up, um, but I really do think that there's a major issue in that section. And I ask you please to take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I trust this is one of the things you're gonna come back with.
Uh, yeah, I think it was Ms. Sherman who was up before, who's, uh, exchanged some emails that I've been copied on with the traffic engineer. Um, and I know that she referenced that she didn't believe that the striping would be adequate. Uh, I know that that was a first step suggested by Brennan Duncan. Um, and the fact of the matter is, for the season that we're in, it's not a product that can be laid on the ground for the temperatures we've had. Um, but, uh, I will certainly, based on the comments tonight, be going back to Brennan, uh, and talking about what, uh, the next level interventions are that can happen outside of that striping and bring them back to council.
Mr. Murphy, and also my, just a suggestion that I think, and he, he has done a great job, Mr. Brennan, the role. I think there was an inadvertent sentence that he said in that presentation, which seemed, which I can understand really bothered people where it said there's, we can't do anything if people aren't gonna obey the laws. And the whole goal of traffic design and all these systems is to set the rules of the road so that, you know, if people do break the rules, at least people are protected. And it sounds like we have a pretty grave public safety situation there. So I think if there's a way of communicating with the neighborhood, you know, that, that the city's care and intent, that would be really appreciated.
And I have a couple of comments, if I may, to follow up on that too, because I think, um, there was also the comment made about, um, a feeling that there was an under-reporting of crash data. So if we could double-check that to make sure that it's being accurately reflected. And, um, I hate to bring this up with my colleagues, but, um, updating our traffic signalization is on our capital improvement program, and it's not on a, currently on the funded list. And it is something that I, I have heard for the last seven years as being a problem, and it's never gotten on our funded list. And we have a lot of, a lot of competing concerns. So I just think we, we have to face something about the traffic signalization because it, it does have direct bearing on the ability of people to calmly navigate roads and get to where they need to go in a reasonably, um, time-efficient manner.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Gloria Beer. And I wasn't gonna speak today, but I've been kind of stressing since the last meeting we had with the CRB board. I just wanted to ask one question. Do this city really want us to have a board here? Because if, you know, it just bothers me because it's one thing after another. We lost two people, and one person, another one to have stepped down. After a while, it's not gonna be anybody left to do anything. And if you think about something, we came in here blind. I had no clue. We had no guidelines. And I was told later on that y'all tried to have a board at one time. Then it would be nice if the people that had started it way back when had came and gave us some kind of information. We've studied and, and, you know, going online and just doing this on our own. And then when I have questions, because I like to do things in order. I'm not a half-stepping person. So when I have questions, they say we can get together and talk. If the three of us are meeting, we have to, you know, let everybody know what we are talking about. I have never seen, I've been in my life.